I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for November 4th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, two to the five, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. We'd like to introduce Megan Willis as our student rep tonight. Welcome, Megan.
Thank you.
We get approval of the meetings of the October 7th meeting?
Move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Recognitions, Mr. Bodwell.
Very proud of our senior class for their accomplishments. Thirty-one students, and they came to John, now they're going to manage a scholarship, very prestigious scholarship, they're Dr. Ed Cass, they're biology, English, and math. They have to have at least one advance in proficient in the other two exams, and have to be able to talk 25 percent of their class. What this scholarship entails is money off their tuition, going to state college or university or community college, for the colleges, free math, about $1600 a year, and for other state universities, it's over $1,000. So, over four years, it's quite a good chunk of money that they hopefully will not have to pay. How many of your kids we think are going out of state or going private? It's a great accomplishment for them, so we're very proud of them, and that thirty-one kids is outstanding. So, we'd like to call up the students and recognize them. Is there a doctor who can take a picture? And we really appreciate you coming out tonight. We know you're everyone very busy, so to take the time to come out here is very impressive. So, thank you very much. Augustus Casares. Nicole Chula. Mary Collins. Isaac Kotay. Taylor Cookshane. Mary Margaret Truitt. Elise Gette. Grace LaRosa. Gabriel Levine. Lauren McNeil. Maggie McCaffrey. James Fiesco. Joshua Holden. Hannah Russo. Jenna Slosser. Rocco Silva. Ryan Sullivan. Leslie Delaney. All right, congratulations. And one more thing, they did receive a letter. We do have a copy of that and guidance, but please keep that because financially it opposite, we'll be asking for that copy of that letter if you're using it for the college. So, please make sure you keep her copy of that. Once again, congratulations along with students and families.
Thank you very much. That's a great accomplishment. You should all be commended, your parents should be very happy, very proud of you. Anybody have anything? Little Mrs. Sullivan, son? Congratulations.
They all worked hard, really hard.
All right, we'll take a short recess so everybody can go home.
And we're back.
And we're back.
A little difference in our people.
I think we should make them stay, it's more fun.
All right, moving on, the superintendent's update.
We have a couple things tonight. One is the update on the Howard roof project, which is basically completed except for some punch list items, and the commissioning agent came today and looked at some things and wants them to fix a few things with some of the flashing, and how the insulation on the inside, they might have to come and bring some more things to fasten them up there a little bit better. So, they're working on that. Julie and her crew are aware of it, and they'll be helping them, you know, with anything they need. So, we have a few more payments, but basically, the majority of the project is substantially complete, and if you get a chance to go, you can see it from the outside and it looks really nice. If you go on the inside, it looks 500,000 times better than it did before. So, definitely go and take a look at that. Next, we have, I like to give an update usually this time of the year on athletic tournaments happening. We had our first tournament game last week, which was field hockey, and they played in Falmouth. It was a tight game, a good game, but Falmouth scored a goal early in the first half, and then it was just kind of a battle back and forth, battle back and forth, and unfortunately, we lost one to nothing, but it was, they did grow over the season, and it was, it was a good game. So, that knocked them out of the tournament, but they did make the tournament. Boys soccer also made the tournament, they had a record of sixteen, two, and one, which is unbelievable, and their first game in the tournament is tomorrow, home, at 2:00 p.m. Girls soccer, also in the tournament, with a record of twelve, five, and one, and their tournament game was today at 2:00 o'clock against Sacred Heart, and they won three to one. So, they'll be moving on, I believe it's Wednesday, against Hall.
At 4:00.
At 4:00 in Hall.
Correct.
And the football team had their first playoff game Friday night against, against, yeah, Hall. We like keep running into Hall. And they beat Hall very convincingly, and so their next playoff game is against Randolph at home again this coming Friday night, and due to having frost over the weekend, we can have this game at 6:00 on Friday, and it looks like there could be some snowflakes, so dress warm. And the golf team won the MAC North Golf Championship and qualified for the tournament, and Zach Bellerty was selected the MAC Unruly Mention All-Star, and Coach Barrett was selected Coach of the Year. So, they had, they had a great season. Eight of the kids actually qualified. And then, boys and girls cross country are still in the tournaments. The championship meets, the boys finished thirteen and three on the season, the girls finished fifteen and two. This weekend, they're going to be in the MIA Eastern Mass Divisional Championships, and if they get to be in a top-four finisher with that, then they move on to the state championship on November 16th. So, overall, our fall sports did unbelievable with how many teams, what their records were, how many won leagues, and also how many were in the tournament. So, they're keeping up the tradition of Wildcat sports because we have traditionally had very, very good success in our sports teams, and they did really well. The volleyball team was not in the tournament, but they came very, very close, and if you got to watch volleyball, any volleyball games this year compared to when they started as a club team, because it's a very young team, it's only, this is the third year, I believe, right? Unbelievable, the talent, the skill level, and the level of play that they have now in just a short three years. And I'm not sure, what would, Megan, do you remember your overall record?
No.
No?
I don't.
It was, but I've watched a number of games, and it was, it was awesome, so, good seasons. We had a very good fall. Next, soccer nets. Mr. Holden has been working diligently to make sure that we have soccer nets for the field out on 106. He had to collect all his stuff over the summer, he had to meet with some of the planning board members, and he had to go to the planning board meeting, and they had to look, I guess there's a 30-day window or something. So, they're meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, and hopefully voting that the soccer net will be approved by the planning board. I don't know if you want to add anything, if you have anything else that...
No, you pretty much covered all of it.
So...
We're just keeping our fingers crossed. Anybody that wants the nets?
Mr. Bodwell? Yes.
Keep everything you own crossed.
[laughing]
Because I understand there may be one person there who may not like it. Time will tell.
Well, that's only one.
Yeah, hopefully...
It's a majority vote, right?
Well, this whole committee, I believe this whole committee said it was fine, but we'll see what happens. I'm keeping my fingers crossed, too.
Well, I mean, the last meeting, it seemed positive, right? Like, everything...
It was positive with them.
And everything's in line as far as all the structures and everything, and all the requirements and everything. So, we should be good to go. And then, the timeline isn't set yet, but we'll have to go back to that company and figure out what their schedule is and what they're going to do. It doesn't make sense to put the actual netting probably up through the winter, but we were talking before that if the ground's not frozen, maybe getting some of the site work done might make sense, and then just put the netting up once the weather's nicer, so. And the last thing I have is, this week is the MAS-C, MAS-S conference, and I know that several of you are going, and I'll be there on Wednesday. I have an executive committee meeting with the MAS-S, and then I know I'll see some of you on Thursday and Friday. I was looking at the information today, and there seem to be a lot of good breakout sessions that I think you'll be interested in, and a number of good overall guest speakers, you know, for the general sessions, and if you want to see all the things in these way, you can just download the MAS-C app and go into, I know, it might have, no, it's a free app. Go into the app, go under this, go Schedule, and it has everything, all three days, and it will give you descriptions, so you'll know. It's a lot easier to do that, because then when you get there, you'll know what to go to, because you know how crowded it is. We've been to these before, and how crowded it is, and to get, and if you want to get into something, there's, sometimes they're full, and there's not a lot of seating and stuff, so I recommend looking it up before. But I will see you, several of you there, on Thursday and Friday.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley. Our student update, Megan.
The Spring Street had a great month of October. They have been seeing many parents come into the kindergarten to volunteer. They had a great preschool Halloween parade where the youngest Wildcats were able to parade around the school. The kindergarten had an epic parade as it was the first ever Halloween parade to the Howard. They had a WB and police fire department escort from the Spring Street to the Howard. It was incredible, and all the kids and families had rave reviews. During their early part of November, they will be continuing their community field trips, and the next one up is the town library. The Roselle, October has been a busy month for them. The students were excited to receive a new book through their reading is fundamental program. Grades three students enjoyed a PTO-sponsored museum of science assembly on animals habitats. Excitement was in the air the last few weeks as the students and teachers prepared for the Halloween. Everyone loved seeing grade one costume parade. The Howard, unfortunately, a report was not received for the past month in the time for this meeting, however, the students seemed to enjoy the senior class parade that we put on for them. And the high school had a very productive month. The senior class went on a field trip to tree chop adventures, and they had a blast. It was great for those who climbed, and others still went to hang out with their class. The NHS once again put on their trunk or treat in the school parking lot. By the end, they were able to raise more money than they ever had in past years. It was great to see the children enjoying not only trick or treating, but the games that were provided as well. Following trunk or treat, the class of 2020 went on their annual Halloween parade to the Spring Street in Howard. This month, we're looking forward to some great tournament games for school sports and the annual patter puff game that will be held this Saturday.
Awesome.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, onto business, Inclusion Matters.
So, Inclusion Matters has had a busy month. They wanted to shout out a big thank you for the Rock Your Socks event that we had at the schools, raised over $1,000 for the Inclusion Matters, which is great, because on Saturday, November 16th, we have a conference, it's called A Voice at the Table. It's an IEP conference being held over at Bridgewater State, and we have 55 people attending the conference. There is a cost to the conference of $50 per person, and we've been able to, Inclusion Matters has been able to give out seven scholarships to families, to individuals that want to go to the conference, and those are, that's just one example of something that we're doing with the funds that we're raising for Inclusion Matters. We also have another fundraiser coming up on Wednesday, November 20th, at 6:30 at Hammer and Stain, so fun paint night out for parents if they're interested, and all information about the conference and our upcoming events can be found on our Facebook page. And if you can't find it, you can always call the office at the Spring Street School, and we'll get you in the right direction.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Report from the Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Hume, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes, so, as everyone is aware, and Donna and I are painfully aware...
And me.
We have, yes, Dr. Oakley, we've been working on these policies for about two years now, and Donna and I had decided that it would make more sense for us to present to the committee in sections. So, the way the coding works, it's done via alphabet. So, we would like to present sections A through C, and have the rest of the committee review it, and then next month, get your feedback, and then approve them, instead of waiting until we're completed with all of them. We're almost done, we're almost done, but we feel that this way it will be less overwhelming for the rest of the members.
It was like 12 sections, so...
Yes. Yes, so it's letters A through L, so it would be a lot. Would you like to add anything?
No, I don't think so. No, Kim's provided you copies, and then you also have them electronically, so if you have any questions, just let us know.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And then, so, I'm so sorry, if there is a conflict, so we've essentially taken all of the other policies offline while we're revamping them, so if there was ever to be a conflict between the sections as we approve them by sections or by threes, we would then look at that, and the newly approved ones would have precedence. So, if there's ever a conflict, or if we're reviewing policies as we go along, then we'll just kind of incorporate those into the ones that we have, just so you know. Okay?
So, as you've been working on these, have you found it easiest to access it electronically? Because if you just click on it, you know what it looks like?
Yes, yes, yes.
Although I like the hard copies to read.
Right.
And is this how we'll have them eventually posted somewhere that electronically, so people can just...
Absolutely, yes. We have to figure out the best place to store them and keep them, but, and it will be organized by section, but each of them within, like, section A will be their own policy, so we just organize them that way and have them available for everyone in the district.
This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hume, Mrs. Sullivan. It's a tremendous amount of work, so, and I know it's taken up a lot of your own personal time, so, thank you, thank you, Dr. Oakley, too, for helping out, but we, the five of us understand how much work that you guys are doing, and you should be commended for the amount of time of your own personal use that you're doing. Okay, school improvement plans. Who wants to go first?
Well, we're going to...
All right.
I guess she's going first.
There we go.
Yeah. We're just, tonight, we're going to have the middle, senior, high school, and then next month, we're going to have the elementary schools.
Great.
So, I just want to, I just want to give a little introduction. This, this time of the year, and this new format for the plans, you should all have one, do they all have one? They got them in there?
Track, which, the...
The, in school improvement, the middle, senior, high school, school improvement plan?
No, they did not get that.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll go downstairs and make copies before they go.
You can look at it on the board.
Yeah.
It's not all up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many pages are there?
I had to look at it, and I didn't get it back.
We could, we could, is it electronically? You can just pull it up?
Uh, it's, it's in different places. So, let me just, I'll just introduce that, and then you'll have it.
You want to, where's the two?
I'll keep it back, and then I can go to that, yeah.
Yeah, we could do Warrant Subcommittee and come back?
Okay, sure.
Warrant Subcommittee, Mrs. Sullivan.
I'll read this very slowly. And enunciate every digit.
And that's something new?
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Holden. The following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year 2019. There were three bill warrants. The first dated October 18th, 2019, in the amount of $185,615.50. The second one dated October 24th, 2019, in the amount of $262,141.54. And then, the third is dated October 31st, 2019, in the amount of $48,494.58. And there were two payroll warrants, the first dated October 18th, 2019, in the amount of $489,706.76. And then, the last is dated November 1st, 2019, in the amount of $503,593.21. As always, all warrants are public record, and once they are signed, they are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Dr. Oakley.
Okay. So, the, if you remember, several years ago, or a couple years ago, we started a new process for strategic planning called Planning for Success, and it was one of my goals as superintendent to kind of revisit our strategic planning process and make it more streamlined, so that the school, school district goals, school committee goals, the school improvement plan goals, and down to even administrators and teachers doing the goals, all connected to each other, and we had a streamlined system. Something that, we were, we were really good in our old strategic planning of looking at the mission and the vision and getting the overall goals, but where the rubber hits the road is really implementing the action plans and getting the action plans and the strategic initiatives, and it was hard to keep getting people together, so the format we decided to use is get this basic plan, this Planning for Success plan, with the mission, the vision, the pillars of success, strategic objectives, and strategic initiatives, and have each individual school improvement council work on the goals within the school, because they're a set group that works on the school improvement plans. So, doing that, we finished last April, our overall strategic plan for 2019 to 2022. You can see that the first part of this is our mission, vision, and our three pillars of success, the rigorous, rigorous and relevant curriculum, professional practice, and student support, wellness, and safety. Under that, you have the strategic objectives, to provide consistent, rigorous curriculum to prepare our students with the knowledge and skills necessary to be successful in college, career, and life. The second one, to support the development of educators who utilize data, professional development, and collaboration to continually enhance instruction to improve student learning. And the third, to provide an environment that supports the physical, social, emotional, mental, behavioral wellness of students. And these are our strategic initiatives. And what the principals with their school improvement councils do is, all these strategic initiatives obviously can't be done in one year. That's why the plan is 2019 to 2022. So, what you'll see in these school improvement plans are that they will have maybe picked four or five, three or four, whatever, from the district strategic initiatives, but also they'll have school initiatives that may not fall under this, but things that they want to do within their school for school improvement that comes out of their school improvement councils. So, they'll be working on this, plus maybe one or two other goals, but it will mesh together in their school improvement plan. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, with that said, Mr. McGlaughlin should be back in a minute, but we will start with Mr. Bodwell, and he can introduce the school improvement plan, and he'll go over the seven strategic initiatives that he's working with, and then as soon as he's back up, you'll see that it's put together in a format that each strategic initiative has a goal, an action plan. So, each one has a full action plan, and you'll see the action plan has the steps, the resources needed, the measures of implementation, how you'll know that it's implemented, the people responsible, and a timeline for completion.
Good.
And the top of each action plan is where they, it says which pillar of success does it fall under, which objective, what data sources we use to identify that this needed to be worked on, and then the initiative. So, that's what ties it into our district plan, and then it's very detailed.
Awesome.
So, it's a much more detailed format.
Wow. Staple two? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tim.
the school because they're a set group that works on the school improvement plans. So doing that, we finished last April, our overall strategic plan for 2019 to 2022. You can see that the first part of this is our mission, vision, and our three pillars of success, the rigorous, rigorous and relevant curriculum, professional practice, and student support, wellness and safety. Under that, you have the strategic objectives, to provide consistent, rigorous curriculum to prepare our students with the knowledge and skills necessary to be successful in college career and life. The second one, to support the development of educators who utilize data, professional development and collaboration to continually enhance instruction to improve student learning. And the third, to provide an environment that supports the physical, social, emotional, mental, behavioral wellness of students. And these are our strategic initiatives. And what the principals with their school improvement councils do is, all these strategic initiatives obviously can't be done in one year. That's why the plan is 2019 to 2022. So what you'll see in these school improvement plans are that they will have maybe picked four or five, three or four, whatever, from the district strategic initiatives, but also they'll have school initiatives that may not fall under this, but things that they want to do within their school for school improvement that comes out of their school improvement councils. So they'll be working on this, plus maybe one or two other goals as, but it will mesh together in their school improvement plan. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So with that said, Mr. McGlaughlin should be back in a minute, but we will start with Mr. Baldwin and he can introduce the school improvement plan. And he'll go over the seven strategic initiatives that he's working with. And then as soon as he's back up, you'll see that it's put together in a format that each strategic initiative has a goal, an action plan. So each one has a full action plan and you'll see the action plan has the steps, the resources needed, the measures of implementation, how you'll know that it's implemented, the people responsible, and a timeline for completion.
Good.
And the top of each action plan is where they, it says which pillar of success does it fall under, which objective, what data sources we use to identify that this needed to be worked on, and then the initiative. So that's what ties it into our district plan and then it's very detailed.
Awesome.
So it's a much more detailed format.
Awesome. Wow. April 2? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tim. Good. So now you can follow along. You can see that probably on, I think it's page three, if there are any that are in maroon, those are the ones that the middle, senior high school is using.
Yeah.
And then, but each one of those then has an action plan. So I think you'll probably just go to the first action page.
Yeah. I'm going to go out. I just want to kind of walk.
All right.
One of the things that we really focused on with the senior high school was tying this school improvement plan together with our NEAS growth improvement plan, kind of going backwards back in the spring of 2018, their collaborative conference. A part of our self-reflection process was to look at what we felt our goals for improvement were, and we identified four areas. Those four areas are what we'll be focusing on for our decennial visit in March of 2020. So those areas are our curriculum, the technology integration, differentiated instruction, social and emotional learning. So those tie, those kind of run right through both our school growth improvement plan and our school improvement plan that you see tonight. We always feel it's important since we're going to develop plans, that we're keeping the same focus moving forward. So in terms of curriculum, some of the highlights in that strategic initiative, one of the most important things is hiring Demianis, our full-time curriculum coordinator, giving us the oversight here at the middle, senior high school to work with our coordinators. Our staff did a lot of curriculum writing over the summer. It's an area that we needed to see improvement in our growth improvement plan and we saw a huge step forward this summer into the fall, which is very important. We know there's still work to do with curriculum writing, but it's something that's important to us. It's also important we've created shared documents and a shared folder that they can continually update. So again, part of the action plan would be to continually revisit these curriculum documents and be adding in both information for instruction and also for assessment. And we want to continue to have a timeline to update. Although, yeah, there should be a live document ongoing, but we still want to make sure we're finding those areas in E D curriculum writing and making sure we're addressing it through budget in terms of summer curriculum writing, but also time, planning time. So curriculum will definitely be one of our major strategic initiatives. Technology integration, especially at the higher end of our CMR model, modification, redefinition, kind of diving deeper into those higher levels of technology integration, we feel are very important. Our staff is doing a really good job finding, again, in terms of modifications, significant redesign of what we're doing and then redefinition. It's really new ideas that really weren't possible without the technology. Our staff has been doing a really good job of sharing out this technology integration, whether it's through shared documents. We also start every faculty meeting over the past year with teachers showing what they're doing or talking about it and then sharing that on Google Docs. If they have questions about it, teach them back and look at what that tech integration might be. Also finding places to store this technology integration. Again, so by sharing the practices on a pamphlet or on other sources, the staff will be able to go back and say, hey, I'll try that. I think that certainly develops more crediality and collaboration among the staff. Another thing that we want to do for actions, continue to provide professional development for our teachers, both in-house and sending them off to things like Masque that'll give them more information, more background, more knowledge to make them more proficient in the classroom. And another goal is to really work on sharing this technology outside of the school, whether it's creating blogs or communications with other school districts. We feel it's important to really redefine how we're integrating technology. It's not going to be just within these walls of this building. It's going to certainly be outside. Moving over to social and emotional learning, we have two different initiatives. One of them, the first one has to do with more professional development. So look at how we're going to provide this. And then the next one has to do with integrating the social and emotional learning into what we're doing. Training, we recognize that we definitely need more training for our staff, social and emotional learning. We talk about it. We are into, we're working on integrating into their everyday life in the classroom and in the building, but training is key. Professional development is key. We've already set aside our PD days for, from now through March for NEAS, but our April and May PDs will work on social and emotional learning. We've already booked a speaker coming in for April and then in May, we'll find someone else. So it's some of those needs. We have, in the years past, we had Tech Tuesdays where teachers could sign up to come in and learn some new technology. Now we've changed that and asked the psychologists and our adjustment council, who was here at the time, for a social and emotional Tuesdays. So they'll pick a topic, they're kind of working backwards and figuring out what topics they want to discuss, and teachers can come in and sign up and just come for about 30 minutes after school to gain a bit more knowledge. We're working on, we've already created a social and emotional learning handbook, but it's something that needs to continually be updated and added to with more information. So that's certainly one of our goals. We'll work on creating advisory lessons within the school, but also bringing in guest speakers that will touch on some of the social and emotional learning ideas. Again, so we're not only just teaching the teachers, but also involving the students. And we formed a SEL Subcommittee and have already got, I think, eight different volunteers throughout the building, teachers. We want to kind of gauge where we're at and what we can do to enhance these strategic initiatives of social and emotional learning. Differentiated instruction, we've come a long way. We've done a lot of PD commanders. The teachers have written educational goals on what they want to do in terms of differentiated instruction. We're going to work on surveying students to see what their learning styles are and what best fits their learning needs. So I think that's important and sharing that out with teachers. Again, continued professional development training, whether it's in-house or sending teachers out is important. Continuing for the teachers to work on their DI goals, but also sharing best practices with the rest of the staff. Again, collaboration is key. As Dr. Oakley said, we did come up with two additional strategy, strategic initiatives. The first one was directly related to our NEAS collaborative conference. It fell under the realm of social and emotional learning. We had to do a guidance department in terms of continuing to make connections, both one-to-one and in groups with all of our students. So we put together some initiatives for that to ensure that, that they'll be college and career ready, they'll be productive in terms of meeting with people at Karlovac, going into academic seminar classes, going into the New Life 101 class and the SAT classes. So try to get them more involved. They've also done their first edition, but they're going to afford a newsletter similar to the middle school newsletter that goes out, again, to provide more information. I think they do a lot of great things. Sometimes it's just publicizing what they do. And we know that when they go into classrooms, not every day that kids come home, it's like, ooh, you know what happened today. So the more we can pump up through social media and provide information, the more informed parents will be, it's certainly more helpful to the students. And the last additional initiative is our student achievement in middle school math and English. The, they have, the middle school teachers, along with the coordinators, have looked at the NCAS data, they've reviewed it, they've found the areas of strength and areas of weakness, and they've created action plans. So we want to review those action plans throughout the year. We don't create a document that's simple. Since we want it to be reviewed and revised throughout the year to make subsequent changes. We have academic seminar classes in the middle school where students can get extra support in English and math. So again, we want to make sure that those are effective. And a student to transition in and out appropriately, if they're doing well, then they'll be able to move out of these classes and back into sort of exploratory classes. And H block classes are important. Those are where we have our plus blocks in English and math. We want to make sure we have a strong curriculum in those courses that's really addressing the needs. It's not meant to be, you know, a time where they're just, you know, doing whatever they need to really focus on the most important things to drive them to be successful. And another exciting change this year is our middle school. We have done the teaming differently where now every middle school teacher has a partner teacher that's teaching the same subject. We find it exciting because that's someone they can talk to, meet with and talk about curriculum instruction and assessment. We think that's going to be a real positive influence on the middle school, but also on their forecast scores and performance. I mean, I think the big thing is that we continue to collaborate with one another. We've got a lot of great things going on. These strategic initiatives will drive not only the school improvement plan, but our NEAS plan and our quest for continued growth improvement. And there's a lot of information there for you, so if you have questions after, I can certainly answer.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you very much.
That is a voting issue. If you vote to approve the plan.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve who middle, senior, high schools' school improvement plan has just presented by Mr. Baldwin.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members, I remind you that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. All right. Our district announcements. District-wide, the school council meetings, Howard School, December 9th, 2:45 PM in the conference room. Spring Street School, November 7th, 2:45 PM in the teacher's room. PTO, November 19th, at 7:00 PM at the Roselle McDonald School. Music and Arts Boosters, November 7th, at 6:45. Athletic Boosters, November 13th, at 7:00 PM. Student Services Coffee Hour, October 23rd, at 8:30 AM at the Middle Senior High School. That went by already. Veterans Day observed is no school on November 11th. That's Monday. Half-day pre-K through grade eight parent teaches, November 22nd. Half-day pre-K, grade 12 parent conferences, November 25 and 26. Half-day all schools, November 27th. At the Middle Senior High School, Math Club Competition at 3:15 PM, November 9th, is the powder puff game. Are we on at 6:30?
Yes, we are.
6:30, Saturday night. Be warm, yes. And that benefits senior scholarship fund?
Correct.
Okay. November 10th, Lions Club Craft Fair.
Actually, is the, the Lions Club Craft Fair is also the same day, right?
It's in the, during the day?
It's Saturday, though.
Correct.
No, it's just, we have it as 9th and 10th, but it's actually the 9th.
So it's Saturday, not Sunday?
It's just, it's just one day.
Typically, it's only one day.
Yeah, it's the Saturday.
They set up the day before. So if it's Saturday, they'll come in Friday afternoon.
Yep.
Correct. I think.
November 9th, Lions Club Craft Fair, 10 AM to 4 PM. November 15th, the American Red Cross Blood Drive, 9 AM to 2 PM. And November 21st, MAD Production. At the Howard School, November 8th, Veterans Day Celebration, 9 AM. All WB veterans are invited. Please call to reserve a seat at 508-894-1250. At the Roselle McDonald School, grade three students attending the Howard Veterans Day Celebration at 9 AM. November 15th, Grade One Safety Assembly with Officer Thaxta. November's 22, 25, and 26 Scholastic Book Fair, open during conferences, PTO sponsored. December 6th, Little Shop, Little Shopper's Shop, 6 to 8 PM, PTO sponsored. December 9th, Grade One Museum of Science Annual Adaptations Presentations, PTO sponsored. At the Spring Street School, November 8th, Kindergarten Walks to the Public Library. Our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be Monday, December 9th, at 6:30 PM here in the middle school, middle, senior high school learning commons. Would you like to make a motion for, to adjourn?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you. Thanks.